Good evening. Welcome to the special city council meeting for May 8th, 2024. I will go ahead and call this meeting to order and ask that you all stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
The flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, we appreciate you all making it out on a special night, Wednesday night, because of the potential severe weather we had last Monday. We're certainly joining all of you in prayers and well wishes for our neighbors throughout the state who did experience severe weather in the last week and a couple of weeks before that. It is springtime in Oklahoma. We appreciate the work that all of our first responders, our emergency manager folks do here in the city to keep us all safe and would remind you all to make sure you're watching the weather when we have those days. So we'll start off tonight with a proclamation in recognition of Drinking Water Week, whereas water is our most valuable natural resource and whereas drinking water serves a vital role in daily life and is essential for health, hydration, and hygiene needs, and whereas tap water delivers public health protection, fire protection, and support for our economy and quality of life efforts, and whereas the hard work performed by the water sector from designing capital projects, operators ensuring the safety and quality of drinking water, to pipe crews maintaining the infrastructure to transport high-quality drinking water from its source to consumers' taps, and whereas we are all stewards of the water infrastructure upon which current and future generations depend, and whereas Stillwater residents are called upon to help protect our waters from pollution and to practice water conservation. Now therefore, I, William Joyce, Mayor of City of Stillwater, do hereby proclaim May 1st through 7th, 2024 as Drinking Water Week in the City of Stillwater.
All the applause goes to our Water Utilities Group. James is here. This is a time, I think, that we like to give gratitude to all the professionals, the repairmen and women, the mechanics, the operators, the night workers, all of them for their constant stewardship of our water and making sure every single drop that leaves the plant gets to our faucet safely, goes through miles and miles of water line. So I want to thank James and his crews for all of that. And we have a short video that Eric is going to play for us from heavens. Do you all have any questions about anything in drinking water whatsoever? Thank you for highlighting.
Well, I know most of us up here would say that before we were on council, we didn't really have any idea what it took to get water from Call Lake to our faucets, and now we have way more knowledge than we certainly did before, probably more than we would want. And, you know, there's so many people and so many systems that go into getting that water to come out of our faucets when it does, and we really appreciate all the work that you all do.
Thank you.
And I still remember my tour of the water facility and how, I mean, that will always stick with me and all the things that the team out there does to keep things going and the repairs, just, I think, a huge debt of gratitude for your team.
We appreciate you coming out, and yeah, we do have a fantastic group out there. All of our employees do a very good job, and we appreciate them. Thank you.
All right, councilors, item four on the agenda is our consent docket, questions, comments, or action on the consent docket.
I move approval and consent.
Second.
A motion and a second to approve the consent docket, please vote. With a vote of five to zero, the consent docket is approved. That drops us down to item seven, general orders. On general orders, we have a presentation, discussion, and possible direction to staff regarding the Stillwater Animal Welfare Facility. I think that's you, Dawn.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Council. Since 2021, we've had many discussions regarding the Animal Welfare Facility here in council meetings and study sessions throughout the community with residents and stakeholders and also with staff, engineers, and architects. A few years ago, Animal Welfare was identified as a time initiative along with transportation, roadways, and Fire Station Two. The city brought both the transportation sales tax and Fire Station Two before voters in 2022, and both propositions passed. Throughout these past few years, animal welfare has remained a priority. We have moved forward gathering information to build a new facility. Brian Thomas, 505 Architects, was hired to work with staff to develop facility requirements and provide comparison options for preliminary planning. He developed a preliminary design and compared the existing site with the new site at the council meeting in December 2023, and that presentation is available at stillwaterok.gov/time. The proposed new facility was designed at more than 11,000 square feet and more than triples the kennel and cattery capacity, includes a sally port, additional parking, janitorial closet, improved HVAC system, workstations, ADA restrooms, intake assessment areas, holding rooms, laundry area, food prep and storage, and pressure washer system. Other areas included, that we have received questions if they are needed, are the community room and get acquainted rooms. In January 2024, we reassessed the location portion of the project. We met with community members and staff at both the Animal Welfare Facility and the Humane Society, collecting additional information. Candy Staring, Engineering Director, worked closely with her staff and IT to sort through the more than 140 city-owned properties to determine viable properties utilizing the At the March 4 council meeting, Ms. Staring presented the criteria and selection process. Under the criteria developed, it must be city-owned for easily quickly purchased and at least 2.5 acres of usable land, not to include parks, property cannot have significant floodplain impacts, and property cannot have current city facilities and no usable land to build, and property cannot border a residential area, no shared borders. There was only one ideal location on airport property directly beside waste management and near Sandborne Lake. In March, we had additional community meetings, offering both in person and online to discuss the site selection process and project as a whole in effort to collect more feedback. Throughout April, Assistant City Manager Kristi Kluck led efforts to reassess the finance piece for this project. In addition to our internal Animal Welfare Project Team, Brian Thomas with 505 Architects was also included. For a comparison with an existing big project currently under construction, Engineering Director Candy Staring shared the construction financial information for Fire Station Two. Under the current specifications for a new facility, Mr. Thomas provided an opinion of probable project total cost to include a 10% contingency for a total of 7.2 million. That is with the approximate cost of 500 per square foot. In your packets, it says 550, and I want to make sure that I note that correction. It's 500 is what he used to get that 7.2. Something to keep in mind is that depending upon material cost and rates at the time of build, the cost per square foot could be more, could be less. The previous amount provided for a new facility was 6.75 million. This was the amount we recently considered and discussed for a 10-year bond. However, it did not meet the existing construction rate with inflation cost. We previously presented that according to our financial consultants, a 10-year bond at 6.75 million would affect a homeowner of a $200,000 property by approximately $55 per year in additional property taxes. Most recently, we were asked if it is possible to renovate the existing facility to meet the needs of our current community and the needs we anticipate having with our growing community. The current facility actually houses two separate entities, Animal Welfare and the Humane Society. The facility is owned by the city but rents half of the space to the Humane Society that is not operated by the city. To quickly assess the existing site and provide observations, we leaned into Roger Ghost with Ghost and Associates, as him and Stephen have been involved in conversations with this project throughout the years. Mr. Ghost and I met with Animal Welfare Manager Rachel Wasserman last week to assess the existing facility, not including the half of the facility that is rented to the Humane Society. Some observations Mr. Ghost included. It would be difficult to renovate with the existing roof lines and additions to make it operationally efficient. We currently have six staff working out of a 12 by 16 office. The one restroom is not ADA accessible, and the current kennel capacity is 26 and cattery is 19. There are approximately two acres out of the floodplain south of the Fire Department Administration Office that could be built on. If we cut some of the high ground and fill the low ground to get an area relatively on grade, we may have 1.5 acres of usable land. There is still plenty of low area for walking when the ground is not saturated. The current facility is not large enough, and we would not only renovate but also have to expand to meet the needs of our community. Mr. Ghost was unable to account for required parking due to lack of time for evaluation since he did do us a favor by meeting on such short notice. From here, our goal was to present a new Animal Welfare Facility on the August 27, 2024 ballot. However, with most things, our challenge is funding. There are multiple questions we all continue to vet. What is best for our community overall and our residents within their homes and in their daily lives? If we present a GO bond for voters to consider, we want to ensure it is something they feel is reasonable, meets their health, safety, and living needs regarding animal welfare, regardless of whether they vote yes or no. If we seek further into renovation, would we have the funds to do what is needed with our current and anticipated animal welfare capacity demands, and is there enough buildable land for expansion? In all things, we take our role as stewards of taxpayer funds very seriously and keep the health and safety as well as quality of life of our residents at the forefront. We are still determining what is best moving forward. Options to consider include: Do we renovate and expand the current location, and what is the funding source for this? Do we proceed with the GO bond at 7.2 million? Do we proceed with the GO bond at 6.75 million and make cuts to the proposed design? Do we proceed with a total different amount altogether without removing necessary kennels and cateries? Does council have any questions of staff or thoughts to share?
Counselors?
You might have said this, and I may have missed it. The, if we were to renovate, we don't know what that would cost, do we?
No, no, Counselor, we do not. We don't know that.
Okay.
And renovation would have to include expansion also because there's a capacity issue at the current site, correct?
Yes, yes, sir.
And there are floodplain concerns as you move further back on that property.
Yes, sir. And Roger was able to address that because he had already worked on that previously. And so that's where he said that if we built up the low ground, that we may get an area relatively on grade of 1.5 acres.
Okay, thank you.
I think this is, okay, so for me, this is sort of a tricky thing because I'm very much in favor of this as a citizen of Stillwater. As a counselor, of course, we have to think about what the city wants, what our community wants. So if I was speaking as a citizen, I would say I would want us to try to get a bond passed, and I would personally look at the 7.2 million because I don't see, we've seen with the Fire Station, the challenges of having to really think about the funding and if we have enough and where we need to cut, and if we're going to do this, and it's going to be a 40- or 50-year building, I feel like we should do it right. And when I think about, and while, when I ask if you'd mentioned the cost, I was doing calculations in my head of what that would increase between the 6.7 million bond and the 7.2 million dollar bond. You know, we talk about $200,000 house for property taxes, that's about $3.72 more a year. So that's, that's not a significantly more amount for people to be paying. So there's my two cents worth, but I would want to know certainly what the community wants because what our role is, is to support the community priorities.
Thank you.
The 7.2 number is taking, we saw a design for that previous piece of land that had been identified. I assume he's just taking that exact same design and moving it to this property.
Yeah, he was going off of square foot, and then let me go back to...
I would think there was less. I mean, that one was going to require some dirt work, it was going to require tree removal, trees, and, you know, I would think this site would be a lot easier to build on. It's basically big and flat.
Yeah, I think that he's also taking into an approximate cost of inflation, and again, he went with the 500 per square foot when, and I'm incredibly grateful for both Ms. Staring and Ms. Kluck and the way that they dove into this and shared their knowledge. And so Candy shared the Fire Station and where we're at with that so that he would know that that's kind of the numbers that we're dealing with, is that 550, and so that would actually make it more than the 7.2. But there are areas that if council decides to go with 7.2 that we can definitely cut if we want to get to, hey, we need to meet this with kennels and cateries, but that is completely your call.
Well, I think that's the part of it that's not entirely true because it's 60% of the community's call.
That's true.
And, and that's a, you know, we can say, sure, let's spend $7.2 million on a, on an animal control facility because it's, you know, I mean, I don't think it's an unreasonable number. I think a lot of folks are a little shocked when they hear that kind of figure for a building that houses cats and dogs, you know, compared to our homes that house people that, I don't know about you guys, but mine's not $7.2 million. So, you know, there's concern there that people don't understand that, and I think the part of this whole conversation that I don't feel like we've gotten, I have, I have gotten, other than folks who did not want us to build it at the place that was identified last, I have gotten maybe one, maybe two emails that have said, hey, we really want you guys to put a bond on the ballot so that we can, so that we can fund this. And I think we need it. I would, as a citizen, would vote for a bond of $7.2 million to build. But I don't know if there are people, if there are even 50 people in the city right now who want us to put this on the ballot, and I would ask everyone out there, if you're listening to this, we need to hear from you about what you guys want us to do with this question because I don't want to put a bond on a ballot that fails. We've done that for 20 years in Stillwater until this last one.
Agreed.
And we knew people wanted, understood the need for a new Fire Station. I personally, as a, as a member of the council, need to know from people in the community that they want to vote for us to collect additional property taxes from them so that we can build a facility like this. I think it would be a fantastic facility. It would be a huge benefit. It would solve a lot of problems that we deal with on the animal control side. You know, we would see more animals adopted out. We would see just a better overall quality of life in our community if we can do this. But I don't know, you know, I have not heard enough from the community for me to be able to say, yeah, absolutely, people want us to do this. And so I think that's the part we've got to figure out is how, how much the community really is pushing us to do this thing.
We did have a couple of public opportunities, people to provide input. One was online and one was in person at the community center. I attended that one, and there were some people who were uncomfortable with the plan. Some wanted to stay where it was because they lived across the street and volunteer there. But for the most part, even the neighborhood came in, they asked some questions next to, near the airport, but they didn't seem to be object, they just wanted answers to their questions. And the feedback there was generally pretty positive for most of the people in the room who chose to speak up and share. So I agree with everything that's been said so far, and I think we ought to be moving forward on this. But as I've shared before, I don't get a vote because I can't vote on it because of my profession. So, but I, at this moment, since we're not voting, I can advocate, and I think we should be doing this and taking it to the voters.
In full transparency, I'm so glad you mentioned that. When we had community meetings, and we had a couple that were really, that were well attended, we had a stakeholder group, we had the in-person, and, and then we met with the community when they were opposed to that original location. There has not been any attendees that have had a concern with 6.75 million. The 7.2 has been recent find based on the approximate cost with Fire Station Two and what we're dealing with with that. So I do want to make sure you have all the information needed to determine what's best.
So, excuse me, if we do this and it passes and we build a new one, what happens to the old facility? What happens to the existing animal welfare?
So there have been conversations. Humane Society has expressed interest to both City Manager Meek and myself that they would like to utilize the rest of the Animal Welfare Facility for, to meet their needs. There have been conversations as far as to utilize it for in times of crisis, you know, if we would have had bad weather and displaced animals, that kind of thing. So there are some conversations going, but I'm never one of those people to jinx myself. So just a lot of great convos being had.
Well, when we had the proposed location, which was north of Boomer Lake, and we had the entire neighborhood in here objecting to it.
Yes.
And the entire neighborhood says, yes, we want to do this, just not in my neighborhood.
Right.
And my response to them was, if you really want to do that, then we're going to expect you to help us get out and get out the vote to approve this thing. And there was no objection to that whatsoever, just don't build it in my neighborhood.
Right.
So I'm going to lean on those folks if we do this to help us get it passed because it's going to take some folks like that to help us get it passed.
So a few of them attended our in-person meeting at the community center and thanked us for the work, and we're very appreciative. Some of them attended the hub groundbreaking, and we're very excited. I don't know if they've always been a community involved or if that's more recent, but either way, if any of them are watching and listening, we collectively greatly appreciate their feedback.
Yep. So like has been stated here before, if we do this, we cannot find ourselves in the situation where with the Fire Station right now. We've got to be able to get enough money, get the thing built on time, on budget, and whatever that takes, we need to make sure we can do it. We cannot, personal opinion, we cannot get ourselves over budget and behind time to try to get this thing built. If the voters want a new one, let's figure out a way to get it done.
Waiting really patiently. I have a few questions. One kind of around what Counsel Harden was just speaking to, just the, our expectation of cost. I wanted to maybe understand a little more clearly how we have our current estimate built and what next steps, like are there any additional steps before we finalize a number to go out for a bond issue so that we felt, based on, I'm thinking from an engineering perspective, you know, we have percent design plans. I'm wondering how conceptual we consider the design that we have and how close we might be. I'm sure you can understand, we're all feeling a little anxious after watching the Fire Station kind of struggle with that.
For sure. So the architect was engaged to do a conceptual design. So it's my understanding that we would still have to go through the full design process, and Candy can probably comment a little better than me on like what that entails and what might bubble up throughout that process. So the estimate is based on a conceptual design. It is based on the architect's experience with building a similar facility, and then he did take into account timing of construction and, you know, placing some inflationary factors in there, and then also taking a look at current bids that the city has received.
If I'm not mistaken, though, this is a problem, one of the problems we have with the Fire Station is that we either pay for all of that out of general fund money, or we wait for the bond to actually pass and we pay for it with the bond money, and then at that point, we, you know, we have to have bond money before we actually know how much it's going to cost to spend.
Correct.
Or we're paying, I don't know, a couple hundred thousand bucks at least for all of that construction estimate work before we even know how much, this is a, the bonding situation is just dumb. But this is a part of the problem, right? Because either we have to spend a whole lot of money before a bond even passes and the city general fund is out a few hundred thousand bucks that doesn't pass, or we go into a situation like this where we're like, well, we think it might be about 7.2, but it might not be.
You can estimate design at about eight to 10% of a construction cost, and the 7.2 is really higher than the actual construction. I think it was construction about six. Do you remember in the itemized bid?
Yes, it was.
So maybe, okay, so probably 600,000 just for the design, and that doesn't account for anything after that, the following through the process. So, yeah, it would be a hefty bill to have it designed first with an estimate to look at that, to understand what the cost is. And as far as conceptual, I would put that at about 10 or 15% design. It's his layout. Architects who do these projects over and over often have kind of a, they pull it off the shelf from another project and so they can move it a little bit quicker, but still there's things that are specific that we want that are different per client. And yes, if you start out, if you were at 10% design, I would consider that a 50% plus or minus construction estimate, meaning it could be 50% higher. And until you get to the 30, 60, 90, as you get farther and farther along, your contingency drops lower and lower, and that's just the truth so that everybody understands, we don't know. But if we do the cost control approach, which is C Mar, and we tell our architect and our C Mar contractor to hold the price at 7.2 and don't exceed, and where a little bit of the issue that happened on Fire Station is our C Mar had a bid that he believed in, an estimate that he believed in, and he was off, they, the company, was off. And so it put us kind of into a spiral to correct all that. And if we, I think we did all the right things upfront, I think it just was a matter of the market at the time and the due diligence part of it, and there will be challenges with any project like this. And yes, we have three years to spend it after the vote. And so hiring the design engineer and the C Mar after that puts you in a schedule crunch no matter what.
I think that's really helpful information or just even a reminder. I'm sure we probably understood that as we were going through the Fire Station bond, but as we look at the difference between 6.75 and the 7.2, it's just helpful to have in mind kind of what that concept, what level of conceptual design we're at, how, what the impact could be based on the timing and the amount of design that still needs to happen. Yeah, just helpful as we consider those two numbers and the reality of those two numbers and how grounded they actually can be at this point and the challenges of the bond, bond process for us. I think the other question that I had was probably Dawn, maybe a little bit more... I think the other question that I had was probably Dawn, maybe a little bit more for you, just to touch on what the mayor was speaking to about just our, our understanding and kind of pulse on what the community is really ready for on this topic. I know when we originally went out with the time projects for transportation, the Fire Station and the Animal Welfare Center, we had, you know, multiple large community, well, intended to be large community meetings. We were kind of, we're in the middle of something there, kind of tail end of that. But with the thought being that we were really receiving more global feedback about, you know, is this a type of project that you want to see in our community? And I'm wondering if you would say, I know we've had a lot of stakeholder involvement and a lot of community meetings recently, but do you think that they've been more specifically around the location of the animal welfare? Do you think we've vetted well enough in the community their desire for an animal welfare?
So, well, in all of our meetings, we have discussed animal welfare, number one topic, location and approximate cost. And how that would affect, potentially affect a homeowner and at what level. We have not, I have not received anything from anyone that is balking on 6.75. Definitely received feedback on location, but not the amount. And I would, yes, I was with you and I would say that because of the efforts, even though those were low attended back at that time, I think those efforts then and then the continued efforts to bring other people into, from the community and everyone around the horseshoe and here has really dove into feedback stakeholders, bigger table. And I think that that's why we're seeing more people participating in our community meetings. And so we have received quite a bit of feedback. Again, nothing against the 6.75. I hope that if anyone listening and watching this does have a concern, that they would share that with us. And we definitely will do anything and everything to gather more feedback, whatever you guys prefer.
So when would a resolution have to be ready if we were going to try to put this on a bond in August?
Do you have the timeline in front of you?
Yeah.
June 12th is the date.
So that's a month.
For the August ballot.
Yeah, we'd have a month before we'd have to vote on it from a council perspective.
We, we have it on the agenda planner for June 3rd and there is one other agenda, city council meeting, May 20th or June 3rd.
Okay. I mean, I would be, you know, it would make sense if you guys can put together and come to one of both of those meetings or, you know, that June meeting with, this is as solid of a budget as we think we can get and this is the number we think we need to be able to build it. And we do a lot of outreach in the community in, you know, between now and then to say, if this is something you guys really want to see happen in Stillwater, you need to come tell us to put it on a ballot. Because I, you know, I personally, again, I just don't, I don't want to put something on there that, that people go, we don't want that. And I haven't seen personally people come to me and say, I want you to put this on a ballot. And so, again, we need, if you're watching or listening or you hear this later, and this is something you feel strongly about our community having and that you're willing to see a property tax put in place to pay for it, please come and tell us that because we're ready to go and I think it's a good thing. But it's the will of the community and we need 60% of the voters have to vote for something like that. So it's, you know, thousands of people need to, need to show up and vote. And we've got three and a half, four weeks or so to have a proposal ready, be able to put that ready for August with, with firm numbers where we feel comfortable that if we pass it, we're not going to, you know, be, be short. But the work you all have done on finding the right site, the, the design stuff is fantastic. And if you didn't see the prior meeting, it's, this is, it's got a dog park with it, it's got, I mean, it really, really will improve quality of life in our community. All of this work has been great. So to me, I'm, you know, for me, it's a question of, to the community, do you want us to do this? Please come tell us between now and June.
Would you be interested in, again, I, 100% everything you're saying. Would you be interested in us creating an online survey and pushing that out on Facebook or something? Just to collect any, any additional feedback?
I was remembering.
Facebook surveys, no.
I, I was, I don't know if we still have access to this, but when I first got on council, we had a service that allowed us like a speak-up maybe?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
That was a 10-question, very short on a topic by topic. I don't know if that's something that we still have access to.
Something with where the files were, were stored and all that, that changed about, I don't know, probably two years ago. But I will tell you this, forget Facebook, rewind, didn't even say it. But our new website, we did opt with the survey option, so we can collect that way. If that's something you're interested in. Either way, we'll promote everywhere.
Yeah, I think the, I like the idea of that short. I did like that about the speak-up. I think that was the name of what it was. Like specific to the topic, very short, you know, like 10 questions. I do think that's helpful, you know, so much of our job, I think, and your job as staff is helping the community understand the need here, right? We have humans that are working here and animals that are staying there and the need overall in our community. So maybe a little bit of an introduction to that as we ask them to fill out that survey. And then right from there, it's the community telling us that they agree and they're ready to, to help invest in that for our community.
Okay, we can definitely at least push, at least a week, send that out and we can push the heck out of it. At least a week, week and a half, something and get any additional information. Are you interested in that question line being 6.75, 7.2, or other and like open?
I, I think I agree to the manager Meek. I think, I don't know, my personal opinion is that we have an estimate that says you might be able to do this for 7.2. I don't know that.
I think that's realistic.
A citizen that's not, I mean, right, I don't even feel comfortable saying between 6.75 and 7.2. It seems very arbitrary at this point when they've said due to inflation, it's 7.2. I don't know that giving them that choice seems, that's my opinion.
It would require too much explanation of what the difference is between 6.75 and 7.2 in a, in a survey.
Got you. We will build this out.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys. Thank you.
Item eight, ordinances. On second read, we have ordinance 3534 and ordinance amending the Stolder City Code by amending Chapter 23, Land Development Code, Article 5, Use Categories and Limitations, Division 1, Generally, Section 23-96, Definitions. By adding the term communication devices, amending Chapter 23, Land Development Code, Article 6, Land Use Classifications, Division 5, Industrial Districts, Section 23-161, IG General Industrial District by providing for communication services as a permitted use by right. Amending Article 24, Table of Uses, Section 23-435, created by providing for communication services as a permitted use by right in an IG in general industrial use. Repealing all ordinances to the contrary and providing for severability. Councillors.
I move adoption of ordinance 3534. Second. Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt the ordinance. Please vote. With a vote of five to zero, ordinance 3534 is adopted. On second read, we have ordinance 3535 and ordinance rezoning a tract of land containing approximately 160 acres located at the northwest quarter section of property addressed as 1300 East Airport Road from P Public to IG in general, excuse me, to General Industrial IG. Councillors.
Motion to adopt ordinance 3525, 3535, excuse me.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt the ordinance. Please vote. With a vote of five to zero, ordinance 3535 is now adopted. Item C is ordinance 3536 and ordinance amending Stillwater City Code of Ordinances by amending Chapter 2, Administration, Article 6, Financial Affairs, Division 2, Purchases of Supplies and Contractual Services, Section 2-609, Public Construction Contracts, to revise the value of purchases subject to competitive bidding, and Section 2-612, Purchasing Limitations to Revise the Value of Purchases Subject to City Council Approval, repealing all ordinances to the contrary and providing for severability. Councillors.
Motion to adopt ordinance 3536.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt the ordinance. Please vote. With a vote of five to zero, ordinance 3536 is adopted. And on second read, we have ordinance 3537 and ordinance amending the Code of Ordinances of the City of Stillwater by amending Chapter 2, Administration, Article 1, in General, by amending Section 2-1, Tort Claims, Workers' Compensation Claims and Payment. Councillors.
I move adoption of ordinance 3537.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt the ordinance. Please vote. With a vote of five to zero, that ordinance is now adopted. Takes us to item nine, appointments for the Sister Cities Council. We have a couple of people who've applied to fill expired or vacant positions. We have applications from Nathan Horton and Debbie Dawson. I will, I will move that we appoint both of them to the Sister Cities Council.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Please vote. With a vote of five to zero, Nathan Horton and Debbie Dawson are now appointed to the Sister Cities Council. Thank you for your willingness to serve on that organization, which has actually been kind of busy because they've got a delegation, the schools are sending a delegation of sixth and seventh graders, I think, to Japan in the fall. Next item is appointments to the Washington School Board Advisory Committee. We have an application to fill the one open seat on that committee by Clyde Wilson. So I'll nominate Clyde for that position on the Washington School Advisory Committee.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Please vote. With a vote of five to zero, Clyde Wilson is appointed to the Washington School Advisory Committee. Thank you, Mr. Wilson. Reports from the officers and the board. Ms. Carnley?
Nothing to report.
Ms. Meek?
Throughout the next few weeks, we will have thousands of visitors joining us for graduations and events. Let's be mindful when we are traveling to allow additional time to get to our destinations and also stop for those in crosswalks. Congratulations to our graduates and all those participating in these exciting seasonal events. Stillwater Public Schools graduation will be Friday, May 17th. Oklahoma Special Olympic Summer Games will kick off on Wednesday, May 15th. And this is our 39th year hosting these summer games here in Stillwater. Oklahoma State University graduation events will be throughout the weekend of May 10th. Congratulations to all. I have two today. This week, May 6th through 12th is both National Nurses Week and Teacher Appreciation Week. Join us as we celebrate our nurses and educators who embody the compassionate care and expertise they show their patients and students daily. We are fortunate to have some of the very best here in Stillwater.
Amen. Thank you for that. It's Drinking Water Week, teachers, teachers and nurses. So we've got all of the necessities sort of covered here. Appreciate that. Vice Mayor Jeloski?
City Hall will be closed on Memorial Day, Monday, May 27th. May we take this time to honor all those who served and made the ultimate sacrifice for our freedoms? Please also remember that trash and recycling will be picked up as usual.
Thank you. Counselor Hawkins?
We have two splash pads in Stillwater, one at Boomer Lake Park and the other at Southern Woods. Both will open on May 23rd. They are open daily from 10:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. The free splash pads are closed only during times of inclement weather or maintenance. Please remember when using the parks to take all of your personal items home with you. Use the trash cans located in the parks and keep our community spaces beautiful for everyone.
Thank you. Counselor Clark?
The City of Stillwater is hiring. Full and part-time positions are available in a variety of areas, including finance, engineering, fire, water utilities, public works and more. We have a text service for notifications about openings in the fire and police departments. To receive these notifications, text the word POLICE or FIRE to 405-742-8281. That was 405-742-8281. To see a full list of employment opportunities with the City of Stillwater, go online to stillwaterok.gov/employment.
Thank you very much. Counselor Hardin?
We, excuse me, we now have an opt-in system for those who want to receive important notifications. Some examples of notifications may be to tune into Emergency Mansion's Facebook page as we may experience severe weather, if needing to avoid an area due to an emergency, or if we have a change in waste management collection hours and much more. You may opt in or opt out anytime by signing up online at stillwaterok.gov/notify.
Thank you very much. I'll invite you all to join us for a day of fishing and games. We'll have our annual cops and bobbers event on May 11th from 10:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. at Boomer Lake. It's a ton of fun. It's a free youth fishing event with local law enforcement officers and the Oklahoma Department of Wildlife Conservation. You do not need to have a fishing license and equipment will be provided. So if you don't have a rod and reel, you can come out and they'll teach you how to bait a hook and how to get a fish off the hook and all that fun stuff you need to know to go fishing. There will be food, games and prizes while supplies last. May 11th, 10:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m., cops and bobbers at Boomer Lake. Anything further? Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn the city council meeting. Please vote. The vote of five to zero, the Stolder City Council is now adjourned. At this time, I will call to order the Stolder Economic Development Authority meeting for May 8th, 2024. Trustees, questions, comments or action on the consent docket?
Motion to approve the consent docket?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Please vote. With a vote of five to zero, the consent docket is approved. Under general orders, we have a semi-annual report from Visit Stillwater and Ms. Blair Atkinson. And Kristi Morrison. It's a team effort.
That's right. Good evening. Thank you all for allowing me to come. I think you all received a copy of the semi-annual report already. So I'm here just to highlight a few things in the report that we think are most notable and a couple of things that aren't in the report. Proud to tell you a little bit about our board. We have a very active board right now and we've welcomed a few new members. And I thought you all might not be acquainted with who some of our board members are. I am chairing the board this year, Vice Chair Ival Gregory. Our treasurer is Chad Wyberg. We have Tommy Schreffler, Melissa Hubbard with the Hampton Inn, Dustin, who is here today, Michael Shaw, Darren Shrum, Leroy Smith, Corey Williams and Constance Williamson. So we have a really active board, fully engaged and we have really great leadership in Kristi and her team. We continue really to focus on marketing and communicating, marketing and communications, both for visitors and residents to Stillwater. And in some of the highlights for marketing and communications, you all saw 55,000 copies of the 2024 Guide to the Local Scene have been distributed this year. With 100,000 copies will be out by the end of the calendar year. The thing that was, made us all a little bit proud this year was the first Kids Visitor Guide, which was produced by the Highland Park Elementary 5th Grade Gifted and Talented Class. I hope you all saw that. It is in our office and we are really proud of that. Website traffic continues to grow. The most visited pages are our events page, which many local Stillwater community members participate in visiting. But also the Fly Home for the Holidays landing site was also the most visited. We continue to do monthly promo videos. You'll see that we're coordinating videos or 30-second spots that are used by the Visit Stillwater, City of Stillwater and the Chamber, featuring local businesses here. And those are very popular as well. Monthly e-newsletter, still-in-the-no postcards or some of the highlights, our rack cards are very popular. You see those around the city and that continues to be something very valuable. The Fly SWO, Fly SWO has been consistently messaged by our marketing teams and coordinated throughout the city. Sales and service teams, a couple of just highlight data points that I wanted to leave you with. During the first half of the fiscal year, we approved $42,000 in grants and sponsorships that equate to an estimated 24,785 visitors a day and 7,900 overnight visitors with over $3 million in visitor spending. So a great return on investment. During the first six months, we also assisted with over 500 events that equated to a conservative 794, nearly $800,000 in services. So a couple of things that I personally was most proud of from So, a couple of things that I personally was most proud of from Kristi and the team was the Crazy Days in July. I thought they did a really great job in promoting that event. And the Fly Home for the Holidays. That was something that we hadn't done in the past, and we feel really proud for the outcome that we had there. Visit Stillwater also sponsored the Christmas tree and the candy at the parade and the lights on Lake McMurtry. Again, really investing in getting people to Stillwater. The Visit Stillwater team has just recently submitted the destination marketing accreditation paperwork, so all of that is going well. And at the end of December, the visitor tax was trending at 7%, which is ahead of previous years and is currently sitting at 8% ahead of the same time last fiscal year. So, a whole lot of information. Those are a lot of numbers and high-level updates, but I would ask if you all have any questions for us? And I say "us" with the royal "we" and direct them here. No, just kidding. But anything that I can answer for you, we happily would.
Thank you, Blair. Trustees, questions?
I do have a question. The visitor numbers you talked about, do they include sporting events, the softball and basketball and soccer? Those numbers are included there?
Yeah.
If we help with them?
Okay.
Which generally?
Because they'll know all of them.
Yeah.
So, it's, we generally only plug in the events that we directly help with in some form or fashion, so there are a lot of things that happen. If we just put them on the calendar, it's not included, but if we provided visitor assistance, hospitality services, visitor guides, then they are in those numbers. So, that's very conservative.
Okay.
Or if a team gets here and the hotel doesn't work, and Kristi and team are calling to make sure that we get hotels, so, yeah, that's happened this year. Any other questions? Thank you for that.
Well, I have an observation. You know, it seems to me, I interact with Kristi a lot because we're on TV together and so forth, but it seems to me that Visit Stillwater has had a sort of an evolution over the last several years where it's not just focused on visitors. There's also a lot of focus on local events, for example, Crazy Days. There are some visitors that come in for Crazy Days, but it's really a local event. And we're seeing that evolution, I think, as a positive thing for our community because Visit Stillwater is stepping up into a void and filling some gaps.
Thank you for that. Yes, and I'd say that's a testament to great leadership, really investing in the community and feeling like, marketing this community is our, is our job.
What do you, go ahead.
Well, and I was just going to say, and I tell Kristi this continually, the calendar on the Visit Stillwater page is the very best you can find for Stillwater, and that's where I always refer people, when they're asking about what's going on in Stillwater, I go, Visit Stillwater website. It's got everything you could possibly imagine. So, I mean, I think that's a great job and things that people do ask about, so.
It is providing a great service to residents and non-residents.
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you.
Oh, I was going to ask something.
Sorry.
Oh, do you track any, we've talked about this before, and this is not really related to what you're necessarily doing, but it's always fun when you're watching some event on TV or you go somewhere and people, like randomly, are talking about Stillwater, right? So, sporting events, I mean, just this week, we hired a new wrestling coach, and like every wrestling website and blog out there is talking about, not just that thing, but are saying the word Stillwater, right? And they're talking about the location. And, you know, I went to see Garth Brooks in Las Vegas, and he talked about Stillwater. And, you know, I mean, there's, there's all, there's that kind of natural sort of stuff that happens outside of what we're really promoting. I don't know if you, if we have any real way to like track that kind of thing or, or help like highlight, hey, people are talking about this event in Stillwater. I mean, we'll get tennis coming out, that kind of stuff, but-
We subscribe to something called Melt Water, and we can put kind of phrases or words in, so when they appear, we'll get those fed to us. So, we do get every single morning, and that's how we find out about some random people talking about us, because we're like, but then we also get a lot of weird ones because Visit Stillwater, and when somebody says, well, next time you visit Stillwater, so we're getting fed all those too. So, we're really reading through them, but that is kind of what we've always said, is everybody is our extended sales team, because anytime somebody talks about Stillwater in a positive manner, it helps us all do our jobs. But we do track some of them, and some of them are pretty, in fact, we'll just start sending you some that are hilarious, that are people, we had somebody in another country refer our website because of the calendar to a sister who's putting a calendar together, and he just randomly found it. So now, we're helping her put together a calendar for another community up north.
Hmm. Cool.
Yeah, I think to maybe expand on that, Mayor Joyce, I have been impressed with the level of sophistication in Visit Stillwater just in my few years on the board, the technology and the systems that they have really to market our community, but to also see what works and what doesn't. So I think if ever you want to know more about that, you, we've got a lot of information and a really good team who is doing great things.
Good.
Kristi, I was just wondering, as we kind of move post-pandemic a little bit farther, are you seeing any like trends in who's coming to Stillwater or opportunities, are opportunities moving forward for Stillwater from a visitor perspective?
Yeah, you know, we were really lucky in Stillwater. We didn't see the decrease in visitors like so many people did, and a big thanks to that was the expo center outside and the agriculture outside activities. The trends were that nobody was, it was all online. People were not spending money or investing money in traveling to meet face-to-face, but in the last about 18 months, that has completely switched again, and people realize they really need to be around other people. The mayor always asks what it is that we would, what you guys could do for us, and we, we do really well in Stillwater, bringing visitors in Friday through Sunday. We're extremely well, to the point where we are having a challenging time finding facilities in which to put them. We need facilities that we could bring in visitors Monday through Thursday, and that would generate a whole lot of revenue that would really help out the airport. And, I mean, it would be just amazing how much I think we would, we would see in increased sales tax revenue. I know it's kind of an apple-for-the-horse thing, but it would help generate a lot of revenue for sure.
Agreed. Anything further, trustees? Thank you. Thank you for being here. Thanks for hustling back. Item 5B, consider an application of MacCap LLC doing business with Chris's University Spirit for a small business enhancement assistance. Brady Moore is here to tell us more.
Yes. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Counsel. Brady Moore, Deputy City Manager, here to present to you the application from Chris's University Spirit. This is for a project at 244 South Knoblock Street. The application specifies, update some of the exterior improvements for the Small Business Enhancement Grant that is administered under our TIF project plan. The improvements include an update to their, a new front sign with LED backlighting, painting the front of the building and the, the south side of the building, and updating awning lights to the, to LED, and so just really kind of redoing and remodeling their storefront. And so, Dustin is here from Chris's University Spirit. I can invite him up to tell you a little bit, to tell you all a little bit more about the project. I will, as a quick reminder, under the Small Business Enhancement section of our TIF 3 budget, $150,000 was allocated by the trustees for the small business enhancements. And again, these are grants that are up to $15,000. That's the max award that you can have, and it's for 50% of the expenses of the project. In that budget, there is still left $48,063. And for this project, the total cost of the project is $26,141.28, and so the amount of assistance requested is 50% of that according to the project plan, and that's $13,070.64. So, at this time, I'll invite Dustin up to tell you a little bit about the project.
Thanks, Brady. Thanks, Counsel. Brady pretty much summed it up of what we're asking for and thankful for the TIF and the opportunity. And we haven't had a facade redo in probably over 20 years, so we're just looking to update Campus Corner a little bit, and that is with an LED backlit signage. We have currently just a standing sign right now. I don't know if you guys have paperwork of, of the visuals of that, but painting, updating the awning lights to LED lights, a little bit more energy efficient, and then electrical work to, to get all that work done. Majority of the project budget is, is the sign, of course. We did try to look for local sources for that. Unfortunately, there are not local sign companies any longer, so. Reached out to ONQ for their sign, who they use, and they were very fortunate to give us that information, so. Pretty basic project. I don't, I feel like without the TIF assistance, we probably wouldn't be able to do this as quick as we'd like, just because of the cost, you know, costs are going up. Inflation tends to hurt that a little bit, so very, very grateful for this and the assistance of this and the vote of this, so. Any questions?
I was going to ask about the color of the lights, but it says orange in here, so-
It will be orange.
Making sure.
Yeah, so, they actually have orange LED lights, so I just think it'll really enhance the corner for Campus Corner and draw a good, a good eye to the corner, so. Not that we already have one, but I think it will help, so.
Anything further, trustees?
I just wanted to comment that I'm really pleased to see this proposal, because we see a lot of TIF requests for new projects and bringing new businesses to town, and we haven't seen as many businesses step up and say, hey, I'd like some of this money to, to sort of freshen up existing storefronts. And I really appreciate you stepping up and doing that, Dustin.
Yeah, thank you, Counsel.
And a lot of them have been downtown, so it's good to see it happen on Campus Corner, too.
I was just reading an article today, actually, that was talking about the importance of facades in our areas of commerce, so I know this would be us investing with you, but thank you for also investing in the way our community looks and how it's perceived by residents and visitors.
Yep.
Excellent.
Any other questions?
Thanks, Dustin.
Thank you, Counsel.
Brady, you have a recommendation for us?
The motion that's included in the packet, and just as a reminder, the TIF committee did vote approval of this, to bring it to you, the vote was six to zero, so there is good support for it.
Thanks, Brady. Trustees?
I move approval of the application.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the application as recommended by staff. Please vote. The vote of five to zero, that's approved. Looking forward to seeing the project. Anything further, trustees? Any reports? Is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
A motion and a second to adjourn SITA. Please vote.
Oh.
With a vote of five to zero, the Stillwater Economic Development Authority is now adjourned.
He's holding on.
This time, I will call to order the Stillwater Utilities Authority meeting for May 8, 2024. Trustees, questions, comments, or action on the consent docket?
Motion to approve the consent docket?
Second.
Motion and a second to approve consent. Please vote. Consent dockets approved five to zero. Under resolution, we have Resolution SUA 2024-3, a resolution authorizing and approving the submission of a grant application for fiscal year 2022 community grant funds administered by the United States Environmental Protection Agency for the Stillwater Utilities Authority Wastewater Project, and authorize the Chair or Vice Chair to execute related grant agreements and documents.
I'll introduce the resolutions, and if there's any questions, Shelley Grines, the Grants Manager, is here. This is a resolution for EPA community grant funds for eligible water infrastructure projects. SUA has identified an eligible clean water project. The project is West College Sewer and Manhole Rehabilitation Clean Water Project. The estimated total project cost is $5 million. The estimated EPA funds is $5 million. SUA has received a waiver of any required local match, so approval of this resolution will authorize SUA to submit the grant application and authorize the Chair or Vice Chair to sign any documents necessary to both secure funding and complete the project.
Sounds like a tough decision.
Are they fiscal year 2022 funds?
That is correct.
Questions, trustees, or action on the resolution?
Motion to adopt a resolution, SUA 2024-3.
Second.
A motion and a second to adopt the resolution. Please vote. With a vote of five to zero, Resolution SUA 2024-3 is approved. Next up is Resolution SUA 2024-4, a resolution authorizing and approving the submission of a grant application for fiscal year 2022 community grant funds administered by the United States Environmental Protection Agency for the Stillwater Utilities Authority Drinking Water Project, and authorizing the Chair or Vice Chair to execute any related grant documents, grant agreements, or documents.
So, this is a similar resolution also for EPA community grant funds for eligible water infrastructure projects. The first resolution you heard was for a clean water project. This is for an identified drinking water project that would be construction of a new chemical building, too, at the Stillwater Water Treatment Plant. Estimated total project costs are $5 million. Estimated EPA grant funds are $5 million. The SUA has received a waiver of any required local match. Approval of this resolution will authorize submission of the grant and authorize the Chair or Vice Chair to sign any documents necessary to secure grant funds and to complete the project.
Thank you. Trustees?
I would just commend our, our city staff and Shelley for continuing to look for these grants to help fund these types of projects, so thank you very much.
Amen. Action on the resolution?
I move adoption of Resolutions SUA 2024-4.
Second.
A motion and a second to adopt the resolution. Please vote. Resolutions approved five to zero. Any reports? Is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
A motion and a second to adjourn SUA. Please vote. With a vote of five to zero, the Stillwater Utilities Authority is now adjourned, and that concludes our meetings for this evening.